I'm going to call to order the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting, town of Simsbury. Today is Tuesday, July 14th. If I can share my screen, I sure can. Thank you. There's our American flag. If all who could stand, please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry, I muted. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is then one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Stop, share. Very good. Okay, let's move on to the roll call. Please indicate your presence if you are here. Holly Bem?
Here.
David Blumey? I don't see David. Aaron Levitt Smith?
Here.
Craig McCormack? Present, I see.
Here, sorry.
Alan Needham? Okay, don't see Alan. William Rice, present. Richard Cortez, absent. Julie Eaton?
Here.
And Sean Glenn?
Here.
Very good. Okay, so for regular members, we have one, two, three, four. We can have a maximum of six, so I will seat both Julie and Sean for tonight's meeting. You are full voting members of the commission. Okay. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes from our Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020 meeting. So in the absence of... Oh, let's see, there is Mr. Blumey.
A little late that I'm here.
All right, yep, a little late. So now you put me in a pickle.
You already replaced me?
I already did, yeah. But...
I can step down.
Yeah, same here, I'm fine.
All right, so let's see, Sean, you were seated last meeting and Julie wasn't. So I'll mark you as present for this meeting. And David, I will show you as present.
Thank you. Sorry that I'm late.
It's quite all right. We can adjust. Okay, so then, since Alan's not here, I guess I will go ahead and walk us through the minutes of the meeting from June 23rd. Does anyone have any comments on page one? I have a comment on lines 23 and 24. The... I think this phrase shows up twice. It shows up again in lines 27 and 28. So my suggestion is to delete the text in line 23, I guess. Motion, all in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, 6-0-0. On the basis that it shows up in line 28 as well. Any other comments on page one? Oh, Alan's here. So is Joanna.
Back to court.
You have some on your way.
Did you thank Joanna, Alan?
Yes. I asked her for help.
And she provided it.
She did, like she always does. We're having more computer issues today. This thing is still waiting. I don't know what's going on.
Well, we hear you. So Alan, I had just finished up taking a roll call.
Yeah.
And I had marked you absent.
Well, I'm here, Bill.
You're here, so Julie?
I'm good.
I'm gonna go ahead and demote you.
I'm good.
Let her go.
Alan, you're up, you're on, you're here. So we actually have a full slate of regular members, so.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, go ahead.
We were going through the minutes of the meeting.
Yeah.
Alan, I had taken the reins there, but I will...
Well, you go right ahead, Bill.
Okay, let's keep doing it.
I'll tell you why. I haven't read the damn books.
Okay. So there was a comment that I made to line 23, asked to have that removed since it appears in line 28 as well. Any comments on page two?
I have a comment for line 135. I don't know what page.
Okay, that's page three in my book.
Okay.
135?
Yeah, just, I think it's, I don't know if it makes a difference, but it's 5.33. It's not 5.33, was the comment. I double-checked it in the P O C D.
Okay, 5.33, yeah. Okay, and I would suggest that on line 140, that we put a carriage return in there, or whatever we call it these days, to separate the motion from the body of the discussion. So add a blank row between 140 and 141. Okay, that may, I turn the page to number four. Any comments on the last bit of the minutes? Okay, I don't have any either. So can someone make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections or with the...
With the amendments?
With the...
As amended.
Amended, with the amendments, thank you.
Okay, so that was Aaron. Is there a second?
I second.
Holly seconds. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I didn't attend the meeting.
Okay, so we have a four to zero to two, with the abstentions being Dave Blumey and Craig McCormack. Very good, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the draft of the Affordable Housing Plan that Mike has been working on. Mike, I had, I started to go through it. I am not prepared to make my final comments tonight. But if you just want to give us the highlights of it and then the commissioners can make comments or ask questions.
Yeah. Let me, I'll open up the plan right now, maybe just go over a few changes from our last meeting that we, that I shared this with. Just give me a second.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's get to, I think... So I kind of, I follow the format from the Planet Conservation Development, added a foreword in this, it really, it cites some of the things that we say in the Affordable Housing, specific in the Planet Conservation Development. More importantly, cite the statute or the public act that requires us to develop and maintain an affordable housing plan for the community. That's Public Act 17170. On page three, which I'm kind of scrolling to right now, the difference here from the last time you saw this page was a added in, as the commission asked, the 60% area median income figures to the income table. So now you see what is the 60% and 80% for a household based on the number of people living in the household. And those, all of those data or those numbers are from HUD income limits. So this is live data from HUD. And according to, I wanted to add this in, just so that it's, you know, kind of puts things in perspective. Simsbury's median income, based on CT data, this is income data that's as of 2019. That's the number right there, the $119,588. That's the median income for the community. Next page.
Is that median income per couple, per...
Per household.
Per, thank you, per household, okay.
Yep. So...
So Mike, I have a question too. So what's the significance to us between the 60% and the 80%? I mean, when they build housing, some have to be for 60, some for 80, how does that work?
If it's an application that's made pursuant to 830G of the general state statutes, obviously there's a set aside, a certain percentage of the development is set aside for individuals making 80%, but also a percentage of that deed restricted, it has to go to individuals making 60% of the area median income. So this is kind of, yeah, this puts it in perspective because these really are the two numbers that, at least from an 830G perspective, you see. And this list at least gives you income. What does it really mean? So, and obviously those numbers change, those are 2019 numbers. The 2020 numbers will come out and it'll be a different number from that. And the only thing...
Sorry.
Go ahead, Bill. No, no, go ahead, Bill.
These are maximum incomes, right?
Correct, correct.
So at the beginning, when you talk about a home is considered to be affordable, don't you think we should say according to what? Is that according to 8-30G or something else?
Uh, no, a home is considered affordable, yeah, it's actually 830G and later when the cost of the homeowner, their 30% of their income is not devoted to household earnings. Yeah, I can change that first paragraph, I agree.
I read that a couple of times and it wasn't clear to me. So it isn't affordable according to your mother. It's affordable to 8-30G.
Yeah, but I think there's also the income restrictions in the workforce housing overlay zone.
So we want to focus on the statute for this plan. We don't want to talk about our regulations. You are correct, Bill, there are income levels that are in that regulation. But this plan is a statutory requirement, so I'm going to refer to all the standards in the Connecticut general statutes.
Okay, yeah, then let's make that clear.
Let's make that clear. A home is considered to be affordable by the CTs, 8-30G.
Glenn, I'm going to reword that first paragraph to clarify that, and then I'll share it with the commission.
Great.
And if anyone has any other suggestions, please feel free to email me.
Now, is there anything other than the deed restriction, it is 30, not 40 years, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there anything else besides the deed restriction for 30 years? Is there any other restriction?
So I didn't put in this plan the whole point system for 830G because remember we didn't want that whole?
Yeah, okay.
But if the commission wants to put it in there, it's an easy chart to bring up, but it gets into, this one gets half a percent, this gets a quarter, this is, you know, there's like, for example, mortgage assistance, certain qualifications that fall under that.
I don't think you need to do all that. I don't think so, but I do wonder about though, that there's a deed restriction for 30 years to be considered affordable. Doesn't a home have to be part of some government program too?
Thank you, Alan, thank you, because most people would think, well, why? We already have lots of affordable housing.
So that's what gets into the comment about the point system for fulfilling the 10%. You know, for example, the Connecticut Finance Authority offers lower interest homes and provides down payment assistance, so that's that sort of assistance that is counted towards. And I can show this later in another chart, like how we get those points based on the Department of Housing's determination or review of our records.
You think if we go down that road, we have to go into the points and everything? We just can't say that it's, and to be, I don't know, the result of some government program? We can't get away with just that?
No, because it's so technical. There's so many different, there's all kinds of different little nuances to those points. We could, I could, we could refer to the point system outlined in the statute too, maybe. Not, say, very general, like a broad statement saying that, you know, 10% of the housing stock must be deemed affordable either by deed restriction for the 30 years or through other qualifying factors as outlined by the general statute.
Then, I like that better. You know, I'd like this so the average guy can pick it up and understand.
Yeah, as long as you qualify that, I mean, put some of the qualifications in because there are going to be so many people who look at this and still wonder why this is an issue. You know, we have to really say, look, just because we have a whole lot of homes at this level, most of them don't even count. Which is, I mean, that's the statutes for you.
Yeah, but Holly, maybe I'm misinterpreting what's being said, but if I wanted to sell my house tomorrow, I could make it deed restricted without any government interaction.
Yeah.
So it's not, they're not mutually exclusive or integral.
But it must be deed restricted to, I mean, why would you want to sell it for less than you need to sell it?
Because I'm a very, you know, I'm a woke person.
Okay, yeah, let's get serious. I think, you know, this is a...
What do you mean, get serious?
Well, I mean, woke person, that's, I mean...
No, there are affordable units in a couple of the developments that were approved. Those aren't government regulated. I guess you could say that they're complying with 8-30G.
Right, the 8-30G was the reason they could build there at all, probably.
Yeah, but along with that came the deed restriction, so.
So I think what is important though, when you have such a large amount of stock in Simsbury that currently meets the concept of the amount of money required to pay for it, we need to point out that the state statutes have restrictions that do not apply to most housing stock.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I think, I'm going to step in. This plan is supposed to be furthering in affordable housing. What you're basically saying is that you disagree with the statutes and you want to use the plan to disagree with the statutes. That is not the intent of this.
No, no, I think we can clarify.
I think the affordable market, what people can afford to buy, that's the open market. This is something, an alternative to that, that's more structured and maybe will apply to more people. I think they're two different things.
Well, when you say it applies to more people, at the end of the day, if the houses that fall in this calculation are 250K and we have a large amount of housing at the level of 250K, the question becomes for our citizens, and I hear this all the time, what specifically excludes this housing stock?
Okay, what's the answer to that, Holly?
Well, that's, it has to do with the restrictions put in statutes, and I think...
No, no, it's the deed restriction.
We have a few bullet points to talk about.
It's simply the deed restriction.
The fact that we need to have more affordable housing is something that we have to explain when so much of our housing stock already is, would appear to be affordable. So we have to explain why we have to have more because the houses that are at this income, at this particular price level, don't count as affordable.
So Holly, I think Bill has a point. What you explain is that there might be stock within that price range what's affordable, but it's not deed restricted. And that's the difference. We're not, and I think Alan said, hold on, just let me, so... So I think, you know, you say, and I think it was 279, but let's say 279, we have stock for 279, but that house for 279 is indeed restricted. So it's not affordable by the definition in law. So that's what you need to explain is, yes, there might be housing stock within that price range, but it's not legally affordable housing because it's not deed restricted.
That's specifically, I believe there's some other issues, like it could be considered in that stock with some other qualifications like FHA loans or...
Yeah, that's the point system.
Yep. So maybe I'll get to the next slide then, because the next one talks about, it takes that income level and then says, what does 30% look like of all those income levels for the 80%, 80% AMI and a 60% AMI? And this is your maximum monthly housing cost based on the number of people living in the house. So that's what they can afford for mortgage, utilities, et cetera.
Mike, can I ask a question? When it says that the housing plus utility cost did not exceed 30% of the person's income, that's their net income, correct? Or gross?
Gross.
It's actually the gross, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I think we should say that.
Yeah.
I'll put that on there.
Okay, thank you.
So I know, Mike, you wanted to move past the conversation we're having, but Holly, there's nothing preventing anyone who has the money to buy a non-deed restricted house.
Ben, I'm sorry, Bill, you still don't understand my point. The point is that the citizens of the town are, struggle to understand why we have issues with affordable housing when there is such a large amount of stock that on the surface appears to be affordable, being within that 30% of utilities, of mortgage and utility.
So people are saying, hey, wait a minute, why do we need new affordable housing when we have existing affordable housing? Not by the definitions, right? And I don't know the answer to that. Is it that people want to buy a new house as opposed to an old one?
How about we're required to have 10% and new houses don't count?
This is, yeah, this is solely, Bill, because of state statutes. In fact, I've always maintained that our representatives could save us millions of dollars if they would just change a couple of words. But they've chosen for reasons they don't share with us to do it this way. I just think it's incumbent, if these are our restrictions, to explain because I'm wondering if Fitzgerald's trying to explain something that's out of our control. We swear to uphold these statutes and I think we should explain why the statutes would be counterintuitive to the situation on the ground.
Holly, I think you explained about the deed.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, yeah. I would actually, I mean, I would actually take it a step further. I wouldn't consider 279,000 affordable housing. It is by the letter of the law, but I don't consider that affordable housing, but that, it is.
Yeah.
So.
Do you, I mean, Holly, do you think it makes sense to, I know that it's going to, it'll add at least a page onto this to clarify that, I know that at first the commission said they didn't want the whole point system on there, but maybe would that help in those kind of situations if you had, this is what, it's not just the deed restrictions, these are all the different situations that are, go towards, counting towards our 10%? Or I can show you, I can show you an example from another affordable housing plan and then we can see whether it makes sense to include it.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for, just so that, not just for citizens, but for the future Planning Commission members who get caught up in these issues to understand. Because we've asked these questions over and over and every new member asks the same questions and it is counterintuitive.
So what I'll do is I'll have the point system in a chart form for the commission for the next meeting and we can look at it and see whether it's appropriate to include into the plan or not.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mike.
So the next one, the next slide, this is a repeat, there's a few changes to the body of the page. However, the key to this is some of the figures and the figures are from the 2000 census, the 2011, 2015 American Community Survey. Basically, in the year 2000, 16% of the homes were valued at under $150,000. This is a decrease based on current figures. The median value for a home in Simsbury right now is $328,000. And that's based on the 2018 housing profile from Home Connecticut. There, we're waiting for the new update for our housing profile, which is going to give us the current median house value in Simsbury. But I wanted to throw those figures out there because it also puts, it ties it back to the first two pages of like, okay, so here's what the individuals make, here's what their housing costs are. This now is our average price and kind of speaks to what the point you're making earlier, Holly, about, well, we have a, we have a half of our housing stock that's below $328,000, meaning there's a good portion of that 50%, which from a number perspective, in the sense of an individual making 60 or 80% of the area median income, could consider that housing option affordable and not exceed 30% of their income. But as Bill kind of pointed out, one of the, one of the things, well, there'll be two factors. One is what you said earlier, they're not getting like a chaff alone or another government assisted loan that would be considered to qualify or the house that they're buying does not have a deed restriction. So therefore, because it doesn't have a deed restriction limiting on income and price level, it doesn't qualify.
But you just did, you just did a great paragraph right there. Without having to go into the point system, you explained the three main categories, deed restriction and certain types of loans. And you could just say, without even saying percentage, by state statute, a certain percentage of our stock must meet one of these two to be considered affordable.
I could, if the simple solution is grab that, grab that blurb and put it to paper, I will do that.
Yeah, I thought you did a great job.
Thank you. So the next one. Oh, go ahead, no, no, Alan, go ahead, go back.
No, no, I was just thinking about, I really would like this readable for the average guy and that, I think that's better, what you just said. Aren't we, aren't we really just saying to be considered affordable by state statute, then it has to be data, data, data. You don't have to get into this. There's other notions of affordability, that a house only costs 250 or something. Can we just limit it to that?
Yeah.
To reach our 10%, to reach our 10%, we have to have affordable housing as defined by the statute, which is, isn't that all we have to say?
I think that's what Alan, I mean, I think that's what Mike just said.
Yeah.
That was his summary.
So I copy it, so.
So I just attached, this is from the Department of Housing, you've seen this chart last time. This is kind of summarizes the total households in town and then it kind of breaks into some certain categories that these, the point system, without getting into too much detail, which maybe would, just summarizing that could, along with what I said, kind of tie it together. I'll go to the, one thing just want to point out is we're going to put it in...
Wouldn't a deed restricted be more than zero because of Climax Road?
So they have to have a certificate of occupancy to be considered a deed restriction. This, so when they, they do their update for the 2019 numbers, that was in 2018.
Oh, okay.
Department of Housing, we're about, we're a year behind.
Okay.
So there's actually, there'll be numbers added to that. But they'll be added in the deed restriction category, but also in the total households. So... And Bill, if you want to say it.
The percentage will go down.
The faster we go, the behinder we get.
Yeah.
Yes. So I also just wanted to point out the temporary... Yes. So I, I, I also just wanted to point out the temporary, the, the temporary four-year moratorium. Um, that's kind of like, so a community that, that, that demonstrates and documents to the Department of Housing that you've made a, uh, a, a college effort in promoting, um, affordable housing in town. Um, you could apply for a, a ten, a four-year moratorium, which basically means a developer cannot come in and file an eight thirty G application for four years. Um, it kind of gives you a breathing room for a little bit as you kind of.
Mike, that, that might resonate, that might resonate with a certain fraction of, of the population, but, um, it, 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 what, what it says to me is, oh, here, here's, here's a way to, um, slow down your inclusionary housing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, even, even the ten, even the ten percent, you know, it's almost like, oh, you get a reward once you hit ten percent. You can refuse eight dash thirty Gs. I don't think that's the real intent of the, of the statute.
Correct.
So I, 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 I'm kind of, I'm kind of thinking that we don't need to include this.
Okay.
Unless, unless Holly, if, you know, when you're, the, the comments you're receiving from people, is it related to this ten percent requirement?
It's just a sheer confusion as to hearing numbers of affordable housing prices and not understanding why we have a problem if we have so many houses at that price point.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's the.
You're right, I, I actually agree with you, Bill. This almost looks like we're, we're trying to shoot for a loophole.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I could, I could take that out, it's out of the game.
I mean, I agree with Aaron, my problem isn't that I don't want more affordable housing, it's, it's that I really want real affordable housing. It's, I, I keep, I mean, every time we get a new election, we, we get some people who write good laws.
So the next, I think you started, I think I should, go, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted, so just for what it's worth, I mean, I, I respectfully, you know, disagree. I think it makes sense to have that language in the document, just to explain that that's a provision that exists, I don't see any problem with that. Doesn't necessarily mean that, that Simsbury, the town of Simsbury is trying to take advantage of that. The, the, uh, moratorium piece. That's just my opinion, so I just thought I'd throw it in there.
It is part of, I mean, if it's there, it's there, I mean.
That's my point.
Yeah.
This, this plan we're writing is supposed to be a pro affordable housing plan.
Mm-hmm, yep, I get that.
And I, I don't know how the flavor of it gets tarnished a little bit with the four-year moratorium, but it is a fact.
Right.
Well, as we pointed out, there's lots of facts, how much detail do we need to go into?
Well, we also don't want to cherry pick the facts and just put the ones that, I don't know, I just think you gotta tell.
That's a good point.
Tell the whole story, tell, as much of the story as is germane here.
Yeah.
Hey, again, just my opinion, I want to slow down the conversation.
No, Frank, I think you bring up a good point. I, let, transparency, somebody can find this out, so why not include it? I mean, it's, I, I mean, I get Bill's point too, but I feel like it's an affordable housing, this is what the, and the state did this, we're not, you know, um, and we're not even close to ten percent, so, yeah, no, I, it is what it is.
Okay. So I'll go to the next page and we can, maybe we can come back to that. Um, a lot of this page is taking some of your housing goals that were outlined in two thousand seventeen Plan of Conservation Development and putting it in this plan. Um, also, I kind of wanted to hit on, um, an example, um, Okagea Commons, which is, uh, Simsbury Specialty Housing. It's for individuals with, uh, MS. Um, that actually was a low-income housing development in town. Um, and we're getting points from that development. And I just wanted to point that out because it, it's, it's a little different than what most people think of as affordable housing or, or diversifying your housing stock, if the commission's okay with that.
Um, yeah, no, it's fine, it shows, it shows how you can be creative with it.
A great example, Mike, thank you.
Can I, can I point out a formatting? Is there, is there any way to make the pictures centered under the previous?
I can, I can.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I want to add a few more pictures and, and touch this up, so.
Okay, because it just looks kind of funny that it doesn't meet, so just.
That's because the guy who did it, he's, he's, it's like this. Looks good to me, no, sorry, I didn't mean to. Uh, anyways, then we'll go to page eight, so, page eight. Um, I, I think I shared this with the commission, but I'm still going to go over it in, in detail. Um, this is kind of going with, so how are we going to get to these goals of, of furthering affordable housing? Um, and I just went through statute and what we have and based on comments that have been made and, um, the goals that are objectives outlined in two thousand eight, uh, two thousand seventeen Plan of Conservation Development. One is inclusionary zoning. Um, inclusionary zoning is a tool that's available under current statute. Basically, it says that you, you require in your regs that new developments have to set aside a certain percentage of the development as affordable. Mm-hmm. As outlined by eight thirty G, so then it just means anyone who comes to the door, you want to add a house, there better be an affordable component to it. Um, not, house being in a multifamily development, I should preface that statement, not if it was just one lot being developed. Um, one of the other things, uh, we, we, we have.
Add that, right? You're going to add the multi.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Um, so one of the things that we've, we have discussed is, you know, if not to steer or, or direct where we only want to see affordable housing, but it would be nice to see that in an area like the center or, uh, the Hartford, a former Hartford Insurance Camp, uh, campus where they're near, it, it is near, um, transit, i- it's walkable, it's part of a community versus it's a satellite that's existing in one of the corners of the town, which is removed and not really feeling like a community. Um, I know that this commission, this is some of the comments that have been made, um, during our discussions on this topic. So I put in there just a, a comment about that. Um, I wanted to point out another affordable housing application that I don't think a lot of people know about.
Can you, can you go back? I just wanted to point out a typo to you.
Yeah, let's not deal with the typos right now, okay, th- this is, um, you know, a, 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 um, conceptual. Yeah, I have, I have it, I have it written down too, I have a number of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It needs to be proofread, but let's get the concepts down.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, um, I wanted to cite, uh, Garden Homes has some affordable units over there, there's eighteen that are deed restrict, are there, they are income restricted and receive some, uh, assistance.
Yeah, Mike, what was, what was the trigger for those, you know, uh?
The developer actually, uh, proposed that to the town.
Did, did they get higher density or did they get?
No.
Okay, so they were just.
He just, out of goodness of his heart, he said, I'd like to set aside ten percent of my units as, as affordable.
Okay.
Um, I think I brought this up last time, but, uh, so in, in the nineteen eighties and up until about nineteen ninety-nine, uh, the, the town of Simsbury, uh, had a housing rehab program that was, it, it funded by the Small City Community Block Grant Program. Um, which, right now, we have program income in there that is about two hundred thousand dollars and hasn't been used since, since the nineties. Um, suggestion of using that small cities grant, uh, program income as a financing option. So what, what, what we could provide assistance to, and unfortunately, this is all, this is specific to tariff fill. This was developed, this program was developed with tariff fill in mind. Um, that money could go through, like, for example, let's say someone owns a home in tariff fill and they need the roof repaired. They have a zero interest loan that would have to be paid back within fifteen years as an option to, uh, of, uh, repair that or replace that roof. Um, what this program would require though is that as a kind of give, that, that unit would become a deed restricted affordable unit.
Hmm.
So there's no sale involved here. It's enabling someone to afford to stay and furthermore, it's letting them improve their, their, uh, property. Um, I, I think that's something that we should, you know, uh, my department, we, I am looking into, uh, po- potentially how we can restart that program. Um, because I think that's a, that was a, that would be a fantastic option. Um, the Simsbury Housing Authority is another option, they, they, they have, uh, they had a plan for an expansion of the facility. Um, we should, the town could invest and assist in investigating whether the plan could be implemented for the expansion. And, eh, you know, this would, the resulting adding units to that facility, which we get credit for units that are at that facility. Um, one of the other, the last two points on this page, multifamily as a right. Um, that's something, or by special exception, I should say, it's something that's outlined in your two thousand seventeen Plan of Conservation Development as a goal and objective. Maybe just, it's worth revisiting that with the zoning commission or suggesting that in this, in this plan. The last one is the, is distressed properties, um, and this came up. So if the commission recalls, uh, it was probably two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, the town owned a, a parcel, it was on Mountain Road. Um, we picked it up on a tax sale. Uh, or we, we, we took it through a ta- a tax foreclosure, I should say, and then it went through a tax sale. And I know this commission discussed on the possibilities to saying, well, you know, you're selling the property, when we have a tax sale, we can't make a profit. So whether the house is worth three hundred thousand dollars or, or eight hundred thousand dollars, we can only sell it for the taxes and interest and attorney fees that are due. So in the case of that, that particular home, the house sold for less than fifty thousand dollars. No deed restriction, nothing. Um, maybe i- it's worth investigating that in these, in these situations where we have tax sales and it's similar to that where it's taken through a foreclosure, et cetera, that maybe a deed restriction be placed on it, it gives an affordable housing option. And furthermore, it's a property that right now is not on our tax rolls because they're not paying their taxes. So there's no effect to the, the, the quote unquote, real estate price for this parcel because, as I said, they're kind, they're delinquent. They, they're, they're not participating like a regular, uh, property owner. So I, my next, my next thought was, so, so we talked about kind of like these really, really broad ideas, is identifying like, kind of, are there partners out there that can assist us? And obviously, this Simsbury Housing Authority pops up as number one because they have the opportunity to, uh, for a potential expansion, maybe there's some kind of way we can, we can assist in pursuing that expansion, just because, like I said, it promotes affordable housing or adding units. Um, other thing is, you know, the Housing Authority is not the only not-for-profit, uh, organization could help us. Um, the Partnership for Stronger, uh, Communities could provide assistance in a, a slew of different ways, uh, which I think we can benefit because, because they can assist with public outreach or training on the awareness of the need for affordable housing in town. And furthermore, they can provide us with maybe concepts or tools that we could use that could assist us in trying to meet some of these goals. Um, the other organization that I just, I, it came to my mind and said, you know, it's worth exploring is Favor out of Farmington, um, they provide, they, they provide housing options for adults with learning disabilities and independent living. Um, you know, this is an organization that, you know, similar to like the Reagan Group that was part of the, the development group at the, um, specialty housing that if we have a developer that is looking for, you know, eh, to develop a property, maybe it's worth e- e- exploring whether they have interest in partnering with an organization such as this. Um, it, it, like I said, it could result in the, uh, adding of significant amount of affordable housing units. And these are kind of noble, these are kind of the noble organizations where you're adding affordable housing units, but you're also adding units that, for example, in this case, that it's adults with learning disabilities and have the ability to have independent living. Um, so.
I think they would consider themselves developmental disabilities, not learning?
Um, I'll change it for you, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mean it. Um, so one, just little fact that I wanted to put in there, because I think this should, this should go resonate, is, you know, based on the figures from the Department of Housing, in order for us to meet, uh, our ten percent, we have to add four hundred and eighty-one affordable units in town.
Without adding any others.
Yeah, good point, Alan.
Yeah.
But it's still, it still should like, that four eighty-one should be a number now that sticks in your mind. So that's what we're shy. Is it, is it something we can, we can meet? It'll be very tough if you're adding a lot of other market rate units. Um, but it's something that we, we should, I, I wanted to include in the plan, so I thought it was appropriate to put it with our potential partners.
Yeah.
Um, the, the last, the last page is recommendations and I kind of follow the same format from our Plan of Conservation of Development. And, and kind of put some goals in there, but I, I kind of was hoping that the commission may add some to this list or modify what's here. So I'll go over the goals and kind of who has what assigned to them and maybe, maybe just for homework for the commission is kind of digest this and think, you know, maybe the priorities change, maybe the goal isn't really something you want to see in the plan, you want to see a different goal. Um, we can change this or expand it. Um, one was, uh, you know, because you're at like such a deficit, a suggestion, you know, maybe for the planning commission, so, uh, forming a, uh, affordable housing subcommittee to look into this. Uh, the next is, and the next is actually something that we will have to do. Um, as part of our Small City Grant Program, we, the Department of Housing and Urban Development has been asking us, uh, have we developed an affordable housing ordinance? We eventually are going to have to develop one if we are still participating in the Small Cities Grant Program. So that's something that I put on there as a goal, it's medium, but really, you know, this is one we are eventually going to have to do, and when I say we, it's going to be most likely, you know, town staff, the Board of Selectmen as the legislative body, but also I think this commission should be at that table when and if that ordinance is established. Um, inclusionary zoning regulations, investigate, uh, inclusionary zoning regulations. I did not put a geographic area to this idea. I thought I, that's something I wanted to bounce off the commission on. Based on our past conversations, do you want to be specific to an area? Do you want to have it townwide? How, what would you want to do? Um, this one is.
Already, the date's already passed.
Oh, yeah. Uh, sorry, it should be, it should, it should be, it should be January twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
I think I, I think I changed that date like several times.
I'm sure.
Um, amending the subdivision, this is one, I, this is, I will say I'm the author of this, but this is up to this commission, this one could be removed. Amending the subdivision regulations to qua, to require a percentage of a new development to have deed restricted affordable units. Um, and it would be the planning commission, this would be a task solely for you. Um, one thing is a, a to-do list for me is, uh, the next one is identifying state and federal fundings that can assist the construction of new affordable housing units. So there's several grants that are out there that if we find something that, that like, for example, the, the expansion of the, uh, Housing Authority, uh, uh, facility potentially could be funded by one of these grant options out there. Um, it's something that, you know, I, I, I've kind of delegated to town staff to say, we need to look into this because, because there may be other options.
Um, Mike, I, I would like to interject that, um, the Simsbury Housing Authority does have what, what a lot of people, what even the strictest, um, proponents of affordable housing would say is affordable. And I've actually known people personally who were greatly assisted um, by those options and, and I must say this, it, it, it is a very great resource for our town and, and it is, we've been lauded in the press for having the Simsbury Housing Authority. It, it truly is affordable.
Okay. Yeah, so that, I mean, like I said, this would
Wonderful. I mean, if we could, if we could help them expand.
Yeah, that I, that's what I figured, I thought it would be, it's a fantastic concept. It's just a matter of finding the dollars and cents. So the other one is investigating incentive housing zones and determine whether sites could be accommodic development. So back in 2012, 2000, I think it may have lingered in 2013. It predates the workforce overlay housing zoning regulations. The town looked at a potential incentive housing zones. Instead of housing zones would be a option that's via state statute that provides a option for density bonuses for a development, but with a set aside of affordable housing, which if the developer actually builds the development, they are, they could get reimbursements for construction cost. So it's it's this, this I put down as a medium. I I've asked, you know, I've asked the planning commission to be part of that conversation because, you know, we kind of, you know, you're talking about where does it go? And it's, it's maybe it becomes more of we're controlling our destiny on a denser development versus, you know, open to where does it land on its own? It's just, it's just a thought. The next, the the last two. One is explore training available for staff and commissioners. I think that continuing education in the subject of further affordable, further the development of affordable housing or figuring out ways to have other units qualify as affordable housing is something that we should look into. So I put the town staff and the planning commission as the responsible parties. And really, this is, I say medium priority, it's kind of a high priority because I think everyone benefits from additional training, et cetera. The last one is, is what I hinted on with the community block grant funding is explore using program income from community block grant program to assist the creation of affordable housing units. And that's really having, starting the conversation with Department of Housing, it's a staff project on on using our existing program income and and how we could use it to further affordable housing. I did not input the the tax sales in here. I just, I wanted to have that conversation with the commission. But like I said, so this is, this is all very preliminary, rough draft for the commission to take a look. And I am totally open to criticism or or input to remove, change, et cetera, aspects of the plan. But I think this is a good direction for us, this plan.
Nice job, Michael.
Yeah, I think, Mike, I think it's a very good start. And gets gets the juices going in terms of the various options that are available.
Thanks.
Yeah, Mike, I I agree. I'm very happy. I did start to go through it, like I said, and I'll probably scan my handwritten comments and send them to you, okay? You don't, you don't need to make the changes yet. But at our net, at our next meeting, I'd like everyone to be prepared to get down to the brass tacks, you know, we can talk about fonts and we can talk about, you know, where the apostrophe is missing, as well as more, let's say, substantive items. So great place to start.
I thought that's what we were going to partially do today. That's why I made my comments.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, Erin, but I didn't want to, I didn't, I didn't want to get bogged down in it right now.
But I mean, that's what we were tasked to do. I mean, that's what I thought that part of this meeting was, not just going out, but also trying to give feedback to give him direction to go back and get us. So, you know, I I was a little surprised, to be honest with you, with those, because I I thought that's what this part of this meeting was to do. That's what we were tasked to do two weeks ago.
Understood. Okay, any other comments? So, yeah, in two weeks, we'll have, we'll have our, you know, our detailed review. Conceptually, Mike, I I think it's, I think it's really good, really good. So I don't have any changes in direction. I have to do a little more thinking about this 10% thing. Yeah, it's part of the, it's part of the regulation, no doubt about it. But I I think this should be a a plan to not get to the 10% so we can decline applications, but we should be getting to the 10% to achieve the goal of affordable housing and go beyond it. Okay, you know, 10% to me is very arbitrary. It's personally, I don't like it. I don't like when the government interferes like this at all. But I'm, but I'm playing ball, okay? I think, you know, what what Holly was saying, yeah, why, why don't these people buy these houses that are that are so-called affordable anyway? It might have to do with the financing sources that go along with some of the other things.
We're not talking about people buying houses. We're talking about legislators passing laws that may or may not correspond to optimal desired outcomes. I mean,
Imagine that.
I mean, I keep hoping the legislature will, you know, and a new legislature will come in and actually create good affordable housing laws. It'd be nice to have, you know, to work.
I'd like the market to set it.
So so I also put in your packet, there's a presentation from Desegregate Connecticut. You may want to look at that because that talks about, and this is not related to this plan, nor is it a planning commission issue. It's it's to keep this commission in the loop on the ongoing statewide affordable housing conversation that's occurring. Because there are changes coming. And from what I understand, very likely, there'll be stuff proposed at the next special session of the General Assembly.
They're not going to obsolete everything you wrote, are they? They're not going to change all the laws, are they?
Who knows? My luck is, yes. My luck is, we'll finish this plan and then there'll be, there'll be a new set of laws that we're now going to be living under.
You know what, though, to Alan's point earlier, I almost feel like it's going to be impossible to hit the 10%.
It is, it's mathematically impossible.
Right, because every time you add, if you have to, like, you're, it's, you're
Well, no, you, you know, nothing's stopping a developer from doing 100% affordable.
True.
Return on investment.
But I'm just saying, it's, it's really
This isn't a market-driven plan.
It's almost impossible. It's almost impossible to achieve that 10%.
That's right, Erin, that's right. And unless, you know,
Yeah, unless, Bill, you're right, somebody comes in and does a whole, right.
Okay, good. I just want to bring a, bring up a comment that I heard over the weekend. Mike, I don't know if this is true or not, but I received a call from a an acquaintance regarding what, what's, what's the name of the place over on Hoskins? You know, Sunlight Development.
Cambridge Crossing.
Cambridge Crossing. And this person happened to be one of the listing agents and was trying to help a potential buyer close on a mortgage. And the lender got cold feet because I don't know what they were looking at, okay? I can only presume it's the workforce, workforce housing overlay zone or whatever paperwork goes along with the selling one of those properties. They, the lender felt that if the property went into default, that the deed restriction should be lifted.
Ooh. That's a good question.
You there, Mike? Oh, he froze. So, you know, the, this was impacting a closing on one of the properties. The, the lender was was not gonna, not gonna close on the loan because of the terms of the
There we go.
Yeah, okay, now you're back.
You're saying
I'm sorry, I lost you.
If they defaulted.
Let me, let me get Mike up to speed. Okay, so, yeah, Cambridge Crossing, right?
Yeah.
So one of the listing agents there was trying to help a buyer obtain financing. And the lender was under the impression that if the mortgage went into default and was ultimately foreclosed on, that the deed restriction would go away. I'm not sure why they thought that, but they were using it as leverage. You know, they, they, they wanted it to, to work in their favor. If they took possession of the of the house, then they could sell it at market rate. Now, does, does the agreement specifically exclude that?
Yeah, that deed restriction is there for for 30 years. So
Why would this lender, why would this lender think that it would go away? Is it something they wanted to happen?
Yes, I think, yeah, I think the lender may have been taking the position, they're, they're treating it like contract zoning, like saying that, well, it's only with that, that specific individual who's living in the home for the time being, that once they leave, I can get someone else there because it was only specific to that person. That's the only reason why I could think that they would come to that conclusion. Doesn't make sense because those deed restrictions are, you know, 30 years, they're permanent.
Yeah, well, what, what's it called when, you know, the, the requirements and the deed go along with new owners?
Covenants and restrictions.
There is, there's another, another real estate term, I can't remember what it is. But essentially says the requirements stay in effect regardless of who, who owns the property. Okay, so I haven't heard the, the final verdict there. But, you know, this, this person was bringing it up to me because they had heard that we were going to be redoing the Affordable Housing Plan. And I said, well, it's that, that's not a, an ordinance or, you know, a regulation. We're not going to get into that type of detail. But I thought I'd bring it up to you and also just let the other commissioners know that, you know, despite how much effort goes into making these things kind of, kind of bulletproof and flow, flow through the system, there could be little hiccups, especially when money is involved. Right, you know, it's, everyone likes to say, hey, I'm do, I'm doing this affordable housing because it's, you know, I believe it's morally the right thing to do. But if it's going to cost me money, I might be so, so inclined to do it. And what, what this person was really worried about was the, the lender was one that was kind of identified as willing to participate in, in issuing the mortgages. And if they back out, that's one lender that they can't refer people to. So, okay, had you heard about that?
That's news to me. Actually, I'll probably reach out to Bill and Farigno to kind of get a, get more details on this.
Okay. Good. Anything else, Mike? Any correspondence, applications on the horizon?
Nope.
Okay, commissioners, any other comments?
I have a question about a meeting in August. Can you refresh my memory, why we put that meeting back again? What was that for?
Yeah, that was based on feedback from, you know, people involved in, in the the commission business throughout the year, whether it be residents or applicants.
Oh, just so we wouldn't be AWOL for a whole month?
Right, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's also a comment that we've, we have heard from an economic development perspective, whether it be, you know, general public, builders, et cetera. When, when they hear the community is taking the month of August off, they, they don't like hearing it.
Are you going to be absent that day, Alan?
I don't plan on it.
All right, folks, anything else?
But if we didn't have anything to put on an agenda, we'd call a meeting anyway, right?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, so, Mike, we should, we should pay particular attention to that one.
Bill, I wanted to ask you a question. In the news, and I don't know if this affects the commission or what the commission thinks of this, but there's been a lot of news in, out of West Hartford about the the sale of the former Yukon West Hartford campus to sort of a scam artist. And I, you know, I wonder, there but for the grace of God go us, do we have do we have an obligation or a process or requirement at all to look at the financial stability of people making proposals that would change the landscape of our environment?
Legally, no, you can't do that. You can't
So anybody could come in here and be
All they could do, all they can do for you is they show a development that meets your regs and you're obligated to approve it. Even if there are bank account views, but what, what, the what you have as a tool, though, is bonding. And and you can use, say, basically saying, well, you're doing this residential subdivision and I'm concerned that, you know, you can't complete the road. I would like to see bonding for that road, meaning erosion settlement control bonds or, you know, other, other means of putting financial surety that you're going to do what you say you're going to do.
At least certain aspects of it.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. That's, that's really your only way to protect yourself on those sort of situations.
Yeah, my, my biggest fear would be some company come in and tear down a historic structure and then turn out to be nothing.
So, so
A house of cards.
If, if that, let's say a company came in, proposed to tear down, I don't know, even though it's, it's rehab, the Ensign Mansion, for, as an example. It is in the historic district for the center. It is a contributing property because you are a, we have a certified local government here. The Historic District Commission is federally a certified local government. From a CIPA, Connecticut Environmental Protection Act perspective, they have standing to prevent the demolition of that structure and could influence the Attorney General to get involved in basically delaying and or suspending the demolition of that, of that building. So there are ways to protect it, but really, in that case, you're protecting it because it's a sort, it's a historically significant feature of a community, not that this person is going to demolish it and they can't afford to build what's going to go in its place.
Okay, because a lot, I mean, that's wonderful when you're downtown, but we have a lot of historic structures that don't have that kind of protection. And it, it's upsetting that, that that could happen to us, you know, someone could tear down an old house and be nothing but
A little progress.
It's not progress when a cop man doesn't
No, 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 you don't have to like progress and it doesn't have to be an improvement, but it is progress.
That's a philosophical question now, isn't it? Wow.
It's always been this way, Holly, it's not something new, okay? I, yeah, I've always had
I didn't know it was from the beginning of time that a community couldn't require somebody who wanted to make a major structural change to have the wherewithal to, to do it before he destroyed the
Developers go broke all the time.
Yeah, but often they're doing it in some field that didn't matter.
Yeah, I, I don't know how many scam artists, as you call it, are really out there.
Well, this guy was a big one.
At least, at least my, my experience here in town is that more or less, the applicants have been, you know, pretty honest with their intentions.
Yeah, are you familiar with what I'm talking about, Bill? Are you familiar?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, that's, that's a clear cut case.
Personally, when I saw what they were proposing at the beginning, I laughed at it. So, you know, why the town of West Hartford bought that hook, line and sinker? Okay, they were very hopeful, I guess.
Yeah. Nobody in the software field believed that at all. I mean.
Okay, I think that's it. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Did someone make the motion? And would someone like the second?
I'll second.
That was you, Erin?
Yes.
Okay, I was writing. I wasn't saying, okay.
I can't see David, though.
Yeah, he's who's in the shadows.
Well, I I moved to a lighter place, but it still didn't work.
This is lying behind you. It's fine.
The light has to be in front of you, not behind you.
Well, we'll figure it out. One of these times I'll I'll come to the end of the light.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor to adjourn, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.